I'm looking up there. Is that good? Does that tell me?
Keep going by it.
Okay. Good. I've called the meeting to order for legislative session 2017-08, April 4th, 2017, the Wycomico County Council. Those who would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Father, Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. That I came to come, that I will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And we will see your presence in all things, as we look before you, so that we may see your presence in all things, with your great kingdom, with your great power, and with your glory, amen. Let thy wisdom be the light of the United States of America, and to your holy and holy saints, one nation under God, in this world of liberty and justice for all.
Brief reminder for those who have cell phones, make sure the cell phones are off, and if you could refrain from using them during the session, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. First item on the agenda is to approve the legislative minutes from March 21st, 2017. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve special legislative session minutes from March 2nd, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes in reference to the fire service agreement from February 21st, 2017. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any corrections, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes in reference to relocation of forest conservation on March 21st.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. First item on the agenda tonight for April 4th, we have a certificate of appreciation. The certificate of appreciation is for Mr. Bailey Fields. If I could ask Mr. Fields and whoever might like to join him to come to the podium, and that's where I'll meet you there. Thanks. It's indeed a pleasure to meet Mr. Fields tonight. I will read the proclamation, and you will get a very quickly, you'll get an idea as to why he is such an important part of Wycomico County and such an important citizen in Wycomico County. The certificate of appreciation reads as such. "It is with great pleasure that the county council of Wycomico County recognizes Bailey Fields for his role in the intervention of a quickly escalating altercation between a fellow high school student and administrative staff member. Faced with a challenging decision in front of friends and fellow peers, Bailey Fields acted courageously and chose to do the right thing. His bold and immediate actions helped to end a threatening confrontation and thereby prevented further violence and injury to those involved. Bailey Fields demonstrated instincts of resolute courage in the face of personal peril and put himself in harm's way to come to the defense of another. On behalf of every citizen of Wycomico County, the Wycomico County Council extends to you its admiration and gratitude for doing the right thing and making such a virtuous choice. We salute you and commend you for your heroic act of bravery. Signed this fourth day of April, 2017, by the members of the Wycomico County Council."
My name's Rick Briggs, and I'm the proud principal at James M. Bennett High School, and we have 1,528 great students. But there was one day earlier this year when we had a student make a poor choice, and I'm just very proud of Bailey, and there was actually another young man who stepped in in a very challenging time, very challenging situation, and did the right thing. They didn't think about what their friends would say, they didn't think about ramifications of it after, they just knew it was the right thing to do, and I'm so appreciative of Bailey for doing that. I've thanked him multiple times since that day, but I'm also appreciative of Mr. Dunn, Mr. Cannon, and the entire council for recognizing him here tonight. So, thank you.
I just want to say my thanks to you. I haven't had a chance to meet you until this evening, but I've heard all about you, and on behalf of Wycomico County Public Schools and the Board of Education, we appreciate your behavior, we appreciate the good choices that you're making, and the whole model that you are for other students in our school system. I want to recognize Bailey's family, who obviously have taught him great lessons throughout life, but he made this quick decision, a very difficult decision. I also want to say thank you to Mike Dunn, who this was his, this was Mike's idea, that let's recognize the positive behavior of our students, and so thank you, Mike, for your leadership and for your responsibility.
How are you?
Good evening. I have on the agenda tonight a public hearing for legislative bill 2017-04, which is an act to repeal the Wycomico County purchasing manual that was approved and adopted on June 17th, 1987, and to adopt a new purchasing manual that should govern the procurement process in Wycomico County, and also to pursuant to the charter, raise the amount of any single purchase that requires formal bidding to $25,000.
Okay. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing for legislative bill 2017-04. If you'd like to have any comments under the podium, please state your name and your address and what your concerns might be. Seeing none. That concludes the public hearing for legislative bill 2017-04. Entertain a motion from council to approve legislative bill 2017-04.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to pull off the agendas, C6, page 10, local preference purchasing.
Okay. You're suggesting to amend the bill?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to make an amendment. Is there a second for discussion? Seeing none.
A second for discussion, you said?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'll second for discussion.
Okay, we have a second for discussion. Mr. Dodd is referencing, sorry, I can't find it here, referencing on page 10. If you're looking at the, your brief book, at the PDF file, it's page 14, but if you're looking at the actual manual itself, it's page 10, and it's under section C6, it's local preference purchasing. Item A says, "It is believed that local preference for purchasing is desirable as long as cost, quality, and service is equal. However, the policy provides local vendors an advantage purely based on that fact or policy to exclude competition from outside the local area as counterproductive and not in the best interest of the county." I think this is something that had been on the council's agenda, as to whether or not we wanted to evaluate local preference purchasing. With it being in this manual as it is right now, it sort of, sort of precludes any work that the council might do, so it's, it is up for, as an option to amend, to remove that section.
I'd like to see this until we work it out.
I mean, as far as I see, 6A, or, you know, section C, 6A, it's basically just a placeholder at this time. We could always come back and visit this topic at another, and necessarily want to remove the title "local preference purchasing" from the manual, so that if we did want to come back and put something in there, this isn't preventing us from purchasing locally, but it's not giving that preference at this time. I don't think it's a need for us to actually pull it from the manual, I think we can definitely leave it on our agenda of things to come back to.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of tend to agree with Matt. I mean, even if we took it out, if there's not any policy in the manual to have a local preference, it's the same effect, so, and if we want to amend the manual to put it in, we have to have a legislative bill anyway, so I don't know what the purpose of taking it out necessarily would be.
Okay.
I mean, I seconded this for discussion, I don't know that I necessarily support the motion to do that, but if other council members feel strongly about it, maybe we can, but regardless, if we want to institute a local preference in purchasing, we have to have a whole legislative bill and do that again, won't we?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so.
Yes. Yeah, it's on, that's what it's on, it's on the table just for discussion, just to point it out for everyone to see what council's opinion might be. Any further discussion?
I agree with Matt also, I think it's a, as long as we draw attention to it, and it is in the purchasing manual, it's in the best interest of the community to go ahead and leave it in there, so we can come back and address it if there is a need at a later date.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have two ways to do this, we can vote on the amendment, or we can withdraw the second and the motion.
I can withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the second? Okay. Motion and second's withdrawn. Any other discussion? Alright. Seeing none. Get back to where I was. Seeing none. We'll do a roll call, legislative bill 2017-04. We'll start out with Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer.
Aye.
Vice President Dodd.
Aye.
Councilman Matt Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Joe Holloway.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Legislative bill 2017-04 has been approved. I'd like to thank Mr. Nick Rice for his hard work in preparing it and presenting it before the council in such a professional manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mrs. Hurley. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, county council members, ladies and gentlemen. I would just like to point out that the proclamation for National Fair Housing Month will be rescheduled to the next meeting, which will be on April the 18th. Mr. Harden was not able to attend this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
The first item I have is a presentation by Therese Hamilton, Executive Director of the Salisbury-Wycomico Arts Council.
Tracy, you can sit here if you'd like.
Oh.
It's your choice.
I, I.
Okay, great.
Thank you. I have all plans.
Is there any free stuff in here? That's what we want to know.
Oh, yeah.
You got your picture on the front, then what else?
I haven't looked yet. God didn't tell me that shit.
Well, thank you, thank you so much for this opportunity, President Cannon and members of Wycomico County Council, and ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate this opportunity. The Salisbury-Wycomico Arts Council, SWAC, have you been swacked? We turn 50 this year, and so to create awareness, I'm going to swack you with 50 years in five minutes. I will not go over a promise. The arts are a gift to our souls, that we may achieve gladness in the midst of tedious living. The arts are our entitlement to lift ourselves to higher ground, simply for the asking. Well, there's no more tedious living than today's world, hence the Salisbury-Wycomico Arts Council has been lifting us to higher ground for 50 years, because we know that the arts are an economic and an academic engine, while making life beautiful. Some think that attending a concert or a play is a luxury or just a nice thing to do, but it's way more than that. When people attend arts events, they eat out in restaurants, they stay in hotels, they shop for souvenirs. Last year, the economic impact from arts in the state of Maryland was $1.16 billion created from arts, which breaks down to a $3.37 return on every dollar of government arts funding. When young people are involved in the arts, their test scores are higher, their character is built, their truancy is down, you don't see a kid with a two bone in his hip skipping school. Children don't desire to be in gangs or in bad behavior, they desire to belong, and the arts give them that belonging. It's an interesting note that Albert Einstein was a mediocre student until he began playing the violin. So there you have it. Arts put money in your pocket and produce tomorrow's leaders. When you support the arts, you support yourselves. So to tell you about SWAC, SWAC has a swinging door. The funds that come into SWAC go back out to the community and grant scholarships, free instruments to needy children, arts programming and education. SWAC funds art in school. This year, we gave arts-enhanced education grants to 10 county schools to keep the arts alive for students. SWAC funds such things as the symphony, community players, Eastern Shore ballets, Salisbury Art Galleries, SU Galleries, and more, plus college scholarships and arts instruction scholarships to youth. Just to give you perspective, there's a pink sheet in your packet showing that in the last four years, the community asked SWAC for $190,376 in arts funding, of which SWAC was able to provide $101,585 to fill those requests, leaving a gap of $87,791 in unfulfilled requests. As I happen to be the state president this year of all the 24 arts councils of Maryland, SWAC also plays a significant role in state and national arts advocacy that benefits all. You can be proud of your state, Maryland gets it when it comes to the power of the arts. As SWAC goes to Annapolis and Washington to meet with legislators for arts funding, and when other states like Kansas have cut their arts councils and their arts funding altogether, Governor Hogan gave an historical high of $23 million to the arts due to SWAC and other advocacy efforts, making Maryland the fourth highest funded state in the nation for arts and a role model to other states. These funds go everywhere, not just to SWAC, they go to schools, universities, arts and entertainment districts, arts councils, and more. SWAC achieving those funds for all. In 2014, SWAC received the prestigious Richard A. Henson Award for Nonprofit Excellence, becoming the first arts agency recipient in the award's 26-year history, as the award traditionally has gone to shelters and service organizations. To elaborate on these many topics, you have SWAC packets that I've given you tonight, so when you can't sleep, that's your go-to material. And lastly, after all this information, I urge you just to support the arts through SWAC, become a member if you want, volunteer, attend our River City Arts Jam Festival that we've created to bring a festival downtown to the river, and with all the arts represented in our 50 Shades of SWAC luncheon, June 13th, to which we have invited and expect her to attend, we hope, the First Lady of Maryland, to our luncheon, and we just asked that you would think about these things and creatively, help us creatively celebrate SWAC's 50th anniversary, because it's really a big deal, and this is why. The Salisbury-Wycomico Arts Council was the very first arts council in the state of Maryland, to which all other 24 arts councils, including the Maryland State Arts Council, patterned themselves after SWAC. It's a big deal. If it hadn't been for the five arts advocates sitting around the kitchen table of Sue Hess one summer night in June 1967, saying, "The arts are important," it could be that there would never have been any arts councils in the entire state to this day. You can pat yourselves on the back for that foresight. The SWAC slogan is, in closing, "We can do together what we only dream about alone." So this year, as SWAC turns 50, and Wycomico County turns 150, I hope we can co-celebrate together that noble heritage and the powerful arts are our strength, and that indeed, they do achieve gladness in the midst of tedious living, because the arts are here, no matter what. And I thank you for listening and reading your material when you can't sleep, and considering some type of collaboration. I've met with Steve Miller, and he's been very helpful, and we're already talking of some ideas, I don't know what, how those are going to land, but I wanted you to be aware of this monumental achievement for your arts council in the state of Maryland, and just see what we can do. That's really all.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Hamilton, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Any questions or anything for me?
Any questions from council?
No, but we do appreciate it. SWAC is a great asset in Wycomico County and the city of Salisbury, and we do appreciate everything that you've also done over the years in that effort. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Next, we have resolution number 38, 2017, confirming the appointment of Sarah Lynn Wilbank to the Wycomico County School Board Nominating Commission. Ms. Wilbank will serve as the representative for the town of Willards.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 38, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, resolution passes. I have a question, is this, this is the last one, correct?
It is, yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have resolution number 39, 2017, confirming the appointment of William R. McCain to the Compensation and Allowance Commission. The Compensation and Allowance Commission considers the salary to be paid for all members of the county council, council president, vice president, and county executive. The commission will then submit its recommendations to the county council within 15 days after the beginning of the fourth year of the term of each council. Council can accept the commission's recommendations, reject them, or reduce them, but council cannot increase any salary by an amount greater than what the commission has recommended. The salary changes would not occur until after the next election.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 39, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is that Councilman McCain?
Yes. Ex-Councilman McCain, yeah. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution 39, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 40, 2017, confirming the reappointment of Ernie Colbrun to the Compensation and Allowance Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 41, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 41, 2017, confirming the reappointment of David Ennis to the Compensation and Allowance Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 41, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 42, 2017, confirming the reappointment of Kathleen McLean to the Compensation and Allowance Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 42, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution 42, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 43, 2017, confirming the reappointment of Pete Richardson to the Compensation and Allowance Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 43, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Next is.
Motion carries, resolution passes.
Resolution number 44, 2017, confirming the reappointment of Mark Rudnick to the Compensation and Allowance Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 44, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 45, 2017, confirming the reappointment of Dr. Memo Deriker to the Compensation and Allowance Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 45, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 46, 2017, confirming the appointment of Mike Dunn to the Compensation and Allowance Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 46, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution 46, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 47, 2017, confirming the reappointment of Winnie Woolley to the Compensation and Allowance Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 47, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of resolution 47, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 48, 2017, confirming the reappointment of Charles R. Smith III to the Compensation and Allowance Commission.
Entertain a motion to approve resolution 48, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution 48, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next item for business is resolution number 49.
Laura, could I interrupt for a second? So we have this commission appointed now, what, is there, need more member, and I see they're going to serve until December 31st, so are we going to get a recommendation before then? Okay, yeah, alright, alright. So, sorry, just wanted to clarify what the process was. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, next item is resolution number 49, 2017, making a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the Health Department in the amount of $104,339.81. The Health Department is requesting funding for the replacement of a chiller that failed last summer, and we have Ms. Lori Brewster, Health Officer, here to answer any questions.
Did you say that it was $339, but it's $399, and would that be correct?
Yes, that is correct.
$399?
Yes.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve resolution 49, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Brewster, how are you? Good evening. Are you going to tell us about National Health Week as well?
Wow, National Public Health Week.
Public Health Week.
You don't eat fish sandwiches from McDonald's. You'll have to tell them the story.
Her Economic Development Director would probably. I disagree with that.
Actually, I think they're very healthy.
There was a story behind that.
I understand.
So, last summer, during the beginning of summer, and during one of our rounds of heat waves, the chiller on the roof of the hurdle building fried. Within a couple of hours, the temperature on the third and fourth floor rose to 86 degrees. And as it would be, the state found out that this had occurred, and they contacted us and said that if we could not give them a timeframe for replacement, then we would have to close the entire building. At that point, we worked with the county, and we were able to limp along for a couple of weeks. The concern that we had was we have fee-for-service programs that are required to generate income to stay in business, so if the programs were not up and running, we would lose approximately $35,000 a day in revenue, but still have to pay the staff.
How much?
About $35,000. Oh, not a day, a week, sorry. So, we were looking at, do we pay $35,000 a week in addition to the cost for the staff? Where we were looking at approximately 100 staff members that we were going to have to pay until the, either the weather changed and got cooler, or the chiller was replaced. So we talked with the county, and we had some funding that was in surplus from the fiscal year, and I will let Wayne carry it from there.
The Health Department had the funding available to cover the cost of the replacement of the chiller. We approached that on an emergency basis. We entered into a contract with, with EZ, who's a contractor who we use for this type of work, and what then occurred was that there was a failure, an administrative failure to encumber the funds, because the work wasn't completed by June 30th. So the work continued into July, and typically what you do when that happens, you have an open contract, you encumber the funds, so that when the work is completed, the funds are available. when the work is completed, the funds are available to pay the contract. There was a failure to do that, and it had to do with the retirement of an employee who was involved, and it was an administrative lapse. It wasn't called to my attention or Lori's attention until EZ contacted us and said, gee, we'd like to be paid. And I said, sure, you go ahead, and found from finance that the funds had not been encumbered, they were not available. What had happened with those funds is they had been returned to the general fund.
So we had discussed this in last year's budget?
Well, we had not discussed this-
I remember talking about it before.
Yeah, we... I cannot recall, Larry, whether or not we came to council and let you know that those funds were available for this contract. But the financial process that we went through and the purchasing process that we went through was appropriate. What was the lapse, if you will, was the failure at the end of the year to encumber the funds that were going to pay that contract. So what, in essence, has happened is those funds were returned to the county's general fund, and now what we're asking for is, we'd like to have those funds back, because we have to pay for the chiller.
So what did you do to limp along?
EZ came in, and they were able to work with some wiring, and they were not even guaranteeing that it would last a day. But it was able to keep the temperature of the building at a level that the state was willing to continue in having the people come to work.
But it's still working, and you just don't trust it?
No, it was replaced.
It was replaced.
Yes.
I got that.
We replaced it. We didn't trust it, that's why we replaced it.
Yes.
It was replaced, and now they need paid, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And as I said, we returned the money to the county's general fund inadvertently through an administrative lapse. We'd now like to request that that money be paid to the contractor.
Was this the full amount originally, or was this a proportion of the?
No, it's the full amount.
And so I'm guessing that it's nine months later, and they weren't paid?
Yeah, I was... Had they come to me early on and said, hey, we haven't been paid?
Right.
I could have probably pulled this one out of the hat.
Then we had invoices laying on desks somewhere that shows? Wow.
Joe, I can't explain it. Can't explain it other than, when did we find out that they hadn't been paid?
While I was on vacation, first part of March.
Shame on you for going. But yeah.
That's what it all happened.
It lapsed that long. And it's not unusual to have work in progress that started in May, June, finishes up in the early part of July. But what you do is you encumber those funds, and GAZB and PKS allow us to encumber those funds, pay in July, sometimes even early August, so long as the work had been substantially completed. It was just an administrative lapse.
Now, they didn't penalize us for the nine-month period?
No, they've been very cooperative and very good about this.
Was... How old was the chiller?
Old.
Yes.
Probably... I don't know that it was the original chiller, but it was very old.
I think it was the original chiller, because it was a Johnson-controlled chiller.
I didn't know that.
Anyway.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 49, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution Number 50, 2017, approving a request to waive the landfill tipping fee in the amount of $52.80 for a neighborhood cleanup event sponsored by the Westside Wacomiko County Lions Club, Westside Community Center, Westside Volunteer Fire Department, and Westside Churches. And we have Mr. Dallas Baker here to answer any questions.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 50, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next, we have Resolution Number 51, 2017, a resolution to engage forensic accounting consulting services.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 51, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 51, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Earl. Mr. Roser, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, council members. I call your attention to Resolution 52, 2017, and auditor's report dated 3/15/2017, describing the county paving consultation.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 52, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
This exercise looked at selected issues concerning roads maintenance. It was not an audit, it was a consultation. The main objective was to develop an understanding of the process. We looked at the county roads optimization model and prioritized work plan. The county maintains 722 miles of roads of various types. We looked at MAKO information concerning budget issues with lack of highway user funding. We looked at equipment usage and provided information to management. And we learned that Slurry Seal, a Slurry Seal program, serves to enhance longevity of some of our roads. Additionally, a proposed website mapping tool can enhance scheduling and provide more information to the public. We would like to thank Roads Division Management for their assistance with this project. We found Roads Management and staff to be very knowledgeable and competent. It's a juggling act trying to keep the roads serviceable in Wacomiko County, as we're all well aware, and I will be happy to attempt to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Roser. Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 52, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Roser. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. Anyone that would like to make any public comments, come to the podium, please state your name and address and your concern. Seeing none. That concludes public comments. Council comments? Presidential comments? Tended the Plow Days, Mount Herman Road Plow Days, Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday.
Saturday. And it was a great time, Pastor Purdue. They put on a very good show, and it was a lot of fun. I know the executive was there, John Hall, you were there. Who else did I see, but don't remember? Joe, you were there. But it was a lot of fun. Was anybody else? Were you there, Larry?
Yeah, I talked to you.
I'm sorry, yeah. That's the way the whole week's been. Sorry, guys. So anyway, it was a great day and a lot of fun, a lot of things there for kids to do and families, and it was a great event. I hope to see them continuing this, and I know they will be for some time now.
It actually had pretty good weather this time, too.
Wasn't too bad, weather, no, was it?
And they had school trips going out there during the week with weather.
Yeah, it's true. I forgot about that. That's very true. That's all from my comments. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work sessions followed by closed work sessions.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First item on the agenda for the open work session is the amendment to the capital budget. Pam Olland? No, Steve? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Good.
So what we'd like to do is request authorization to move $15,000 from the Recreation Parks operating budget from this year. We'd like to move that to the capital budget in order to complete two program open space projects. One of them is at Billie Jean Jackson Park to replace the basketball court. The other project is at Indian Village to replace some fencing and also address a court issue. These projects have already been approved by Program Open Space, they've already been approved by the Board of Public Works. What we failed to do in last year's CIP, that was during a transition time when we were without a full-time director, we were in an acting director capacity, and so we failed to get the local match, which is a 10% match, to be able to fulfill these projects. So we've got this approved by the state. We'd like to execute these projects, get them done. So what we're seeking to do is we found some savings in our Recreation Parks budget. We'd just like to move that over to capital so that we can get these projects completed. So that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. Any questions?
So you're just asking for the 10% match?
Questions from anyone? Okay, Steve, it doesn't look like a real problem here.
What would be the process from here? It requires a public hearing.
Okay.
And we can have that at the April 18 meeting.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. What we'll do, we'll schedule for a public hearing on the floor.
Perfect.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
I've got a question, Steve, if I could. Did you hear any complaints about the travel baseball tournaments in Fruitland this past weekend or week?
No, I didn't. I didn't.
Somebody was saying that a lot of the families coming from out of town were complaining that the bathrooms weren't working down Fruitland. And I know that's supposed to be under there, the town of Fruitland. Are we offering any assistance? Because I understand that their Recs and Parks Commission is defunct now.
Yeah, my understanding is it's running through the town. So, yeah, they don't have the commission like they once did. But we can certainly reach out to them and find out. I'm not aware of that concern.
Could you? I know some of the people are complaining, but I don't think they engaged our county. But my name was mentioned, and it is my district. But when people come out of town, that's the first thing they see, and they remember that. So they've got clogged toilets or bathrooms that aren't working. Maybe we can work something out with that tournament that's going on down there.
Sure. Yeah, and we've helped Bill Atkinson, yeah, with those tournaments. He hosts some at the athletic complex. But, yeah, we'll reach out.
And I'm sure that if they did reach out to you, that you would have worked with them.
Sure.
I have one question, Steve. What is the status of open space money right now? Do we have any... Do we currently have a backlog of it? Or, not a backlog, but just, do we have any currently?
Yeah, we're just starting that process right now. So we've sent out letters to all the towns and municipalities to get their requests for what they'd like to put in. We typically get the number from the state as far as what our local appropriation will be, usually at the beginning of May. So within the next month, we should find out what kind of money we're going to get from the state. And then we work through our Recreation Parks Commission to kind of evaluate all the projects and make recommendations as far as which we can take.
Is there any in reserve right now?
There's a small balance right now. Most of them are tied up in projects, but there's a small balance. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but...
What do you anticipate possible? I don't know. It's a long shot. I'm curious as to what you might anticipate.
We got about 300 last year, and the current rule is that 75% of that has to go, or 75 can go towards development, 25 has to be set aside for acquisition. So at this moment, acquisition's not on the immediate radar, so we're looking at 75% of that. So it's about $225,000 last year. So we're hoping for that or more. It could be that we get more this year, because the state's looking to restore past open space funds that were not paid. So we're hoping to get more, but we'll hope for at least that, and then hopefully more. But we'll see.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Next item we have on the agenda is the discussion for waiver fees for nonprofit organizations. I know this is something that has come up. I believe that when we're talking about waiver fees, I guess we're primarily talking about building permits, or else we're talking about requests to waive fees for dumping?
Yeah, I mean, it's come up a couple times, I think, with tipping fees. I think, we just had one for the Westside cleanup. And I know that, you know, Mr. Cunningham, they contacted me, and I believe contacted the executive beforehand, and talked to Mr. Whitlock at the landfill about whether or not he'd have to pay fees or not pay fees. And it was, I mean, you know, he's told basically you have to go to the council to get them waived. And there was not... He didn't really have any certainty that it was going to, that they were going to be waived, and we did. But it seems that we should, I think we should probably look at having a system so that, you know, they don't have to go through all, you know, people in these situations. And I think there do need to be limits on it. I, you know, I know we got an email from the executive kind of talking about some of the concerns with this, and I've talked with other council members about having to have limits on this and parameters for how this sort of thing would work. But I think it would be better if, instead of having to come to us for a waiver of these fees, if we have just a process that, you know, these people can get it, these people can't, you know, people will know whether or not they're able to get it. They don't have to, you know, worry about the whims of the council for this. It'd be, I think, aimed at smaller nonprofits, you know, making sure that maybe, you know, set a dollar limit, you know, so it's not, you know, $1,000 in tipping fees we're suddenly waiving or something like that, you know, maybe $200 limit once a year or twice a year. You know, maybe just start with tipping fees at the landfill, and maybe look at other things. But if crafted wrong, this could, it could really go wrong, definitely. So I think, but the way it is now, I don't think serves people very well. And so I think it would be better to have something where they have certainty, where they know, and can just talk to the department head or talk to someone at the landfill and say, you qualify, don't even worry about this. And, you know, they just have to do it that way. So that's, I'd like to start exploring it that way.
Joe?
I disagree completely. And besides that, I object to a draft being in our work session for a resolution. I think it's premature, and I don't think it has anything to do with the work session. I don't think it should be there. First of all, organizations come to the county, and they want the county to do them a favor. They may be 501(c)(3)'s, they're nonprofit organizations, but they're not, if we craft a bill for this, we're crafting a bill for everybody in the United States to come before this council and ask for a waiver. Now, there are nonprofits that have huge budgets, who can afford tipping fees, can afford fees. There should be a process, and not necessarily a formal process, that the county council should have the option of waiving these fees. When you get into a more formal process where you obligate by having a resolution, there's no flexibility. And you've taken away the flexibility. No matter how hard you go to craft this legislation, it's a disservice to somebody at the end of the line. You know, I remember very recently appearing before a federal body who, we needed him to change the rules, and this was the FAA, and we needed him to change the rules, and we needed to have them bend the rules. And they said, absolutely not. They said, when we bend the rules, we have a problem later on down the road, and we can't fix it because we bent the rules. So here we have, if we draft legislation for this, we're just adding no flexibility at all, and it's really going to be a disservice, I think, to our citizens.
Thank you, Councilman Hall. Any other comments?
I guess I'll respond.
Of course you would. I'd be disappointed if you didn't.
Well, very good, very good. Well, I mean, we're crafting something for Wacomiko County, not everyone in the U.S. It's for those here. And I do think we should have a limit, you know, it shouldn't be for large organizations. But I do think people should have some certainty. Right now, it's up to the whims of us seven here, you know, basically whether or not they get it. And sometimes people get the waiver, and sometimes they don't. And I think that does a disservice to people. And we're not talking about bending the rules, we're talking about making new rules, so they know what the rules are. And, you know, right now, we're essentially bending the rules when we waive for this person, but not that person. And that's a very dangerous road to go down, and I think we're on tenuous ground when we do that. So, you know, we need to have something, I think, that lays out if you qualify for a waiver, if you don't. And we go from there, and then, you know, people will know if they, you know, if they have a, you know, I would like to propose something. This legislation is not really what I had in mind, but it's in our work, it's in our briefbook. You know, something, you know, if we start with tipping fees, for instance, would be just, you know, once a year, neighborhood cleanup, under $200, you can apply to the landfill director, and the landfill director, you know, upon verifying that you're a nonprofit with a certain
and the landfill director, you know, upon verifying that you're a nonprofit with a certain amount of budget, you know, that you can have fees up to $200 waived. And that's, you know, that would be much easier than, you know, Mr. Cunningham having to talk to me, talk to the executive, talk to the landfill, you know, come, you know, have this resolution before the council, you know, one phone call and done, basically. It'd be much easier on the citizens of Wycomico County instead of having to come begging to seven politicians where they just know for certainty whether or not they qualify or not, so.
Well, again, my respected councilperson sits to my right, who I like so much, I disagree. I feel that we have seven capable people on the council who don't necessarily react to whims. We react to people's needs, and we trust in their judgment, and that's why we were elected. I think that we are very capable of doing this on an individual basis, and it's not, it doesn't happen very often, and it's a courtesy of the county to do this type of thing, and I think it should be kept as a courtesy.
The councilmember to my left, I like you very much too, even though we disagree on this, but I guess it's for the rest of the council to...
Notice that everybody's sitting to the right of Mr. Hall.
Yeah, that's correct.
Any other comments?
I got just a couple of things for tipping fees. You know, I just don't see us being bogged down by these requests for waiving tipping fees. I just, you know, we might have two a year that come to us and ask for this. I just don't see us legislating, so I hate to legislate the world. And then, building permits, I thought we were talking about wheelchair ramps originally, and this legislation is universal building, you know, building permits.
This is just, this is just an example that...
Okay, okay.
...so we put in there for us.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with saying that wheelchair ramps are, don't have to get a build permit if they're a 501(c)(3) organization, but, you know, does it necessarily have to be legislation? Can it not just be a policy resolution? I don't know, process-wise, if that's not something that we can just do through resolution.
This is a resolution. It's not legislation, but if you made it for wheelchair ramps, it would still just be a resolution because you adopted building permit fees by resolution.
Okay.
Good one.
I think part of my question, I don't have a problem waiving the fee, but it should be done on a per basis. My question is, when you start waiving fees, people think they don't have to have things inspected, and even wheelchair ramps need to be inspected, so they won't be applying to the county, we won't know they're being built, we won't know who's building them, and most of them do a very good job, don't get me wrong, but they need to be inspected to make sure that whoever the end user of that is, is protected. So I still think on a per-unit basis, or, you know, just ask them to apply to us. We meet every two weeks, or you all do, and if we get it in the meantime, need an emergency, we can certainly do some calls.
Thank you, Bob.
I agree with that. You know, it goes back to before agricultural buildings didn't need, you know, actually didn't need permits at all. Now they do need permits, but there's no fee, so, you know, I agree, they do need to be inspected. Last thing we need is a wheelchair ramp that we approved that causes injury.
It's a safety issue.
Initially, I thought it would be, initially, at first blush, I thought, well, this is great, you know, let's establish some policy, let's be, you know, you know, open-minded about these organizations that are, you know, spending their time and taking the effort to do better things for the community and, you know, see what we can establish on a permanent basis to help, to help these organizations. But I just, you know, in looking at it, it seems like it might be a real, you know, landmine as far as trying to figure out, you know, what might be, you know, how for things not to get out of control. I couldn't tell you right now that if we were to pass any type of legislation, where we would start as far as the, you know, the amount of money which, where we would limit it. I don't know how many people would walk in the door within the next year, so I, you know, we'd be passing a resolution that would create some exposure, we have no, absolutely no idea of what that, that is amounts could be in the future, because I couldn't tell you how many people out there might need ramps or might need tipping fees waived. And I don't, I really don't think there's any documentation out there that would show us what to anticipate. That's my own reservation on this, and for it to come in, again, we only get maybe four a year, I think, and so far, I'm okay with that.
Are you going to say something, Joe?
When you're done.
Go ahead.
The more we talk about it, the more applications for, you'll probably get.
That's right.
But I understand where Mark's coming from on this, and I agree with John, you know, you do have some nonprofits that have huge budgets, and if we did anything, you know, leaving it up, you know, when one group comes in, okay, we'll let them have it, the next group, some people think they're not as important when they are as important, but maybe some people don't. If we did any kind of resolution or legislation, just basically put a dollar amount that no, no waivers will be given over the amount of, say, $100 or $200 or whatever, and keep it very simple. And that way, any nonprofit that would come in that would want a waiver for fees, that would be the limit, the absolute limit that they could get if we did any at all. I think all the points that everyone's brought up here tonight's correct, but it's kind of tough to pick and choose who's going to get a waiver and who isn't. I've been, for the length of time I've been here, I've seen some people get waivers and some people not get waivers, and you kind of wonder why, because in their eyes, they're as important as the next people or the people that's been here before them. So if we did anything, I think we should do a waiver and set a limit, you know, we could come up with a figure, and whoever applied could apply, and I guess make sure that's inspected. Interestingly enough, not long ago, I got a phone call about wheelchair ramp, and somebody said, "You don't have to get permits for those, do you?" I said, "Well, yeah," and said, "But we will next time, I guess." So they've been building them without permits, so anyway, that's what I have to say about it. That's good.
Any other comments? Councilman Kilmer, if there's anything that you think that you may want to fine-tune, any solid recommendations that you might like to see put together for a formal resolution?
Yeah.
It might help the council as a whole get a better idea of maybe where we would, where this would take us?
I mean, if there's no desire to do it, then, I mean, you know, that's fine, I'm fine with, you know, I mean, if you don't want to do it, that's fine with me. If there's a desire to do it, then I'll go ahead and we can do something, but it's kind of two against and one maybe, you know, so, you know, don't want to spend time doing this if, you know, other councilmembers, you know, if there's not four councilmembers that have desire for it.
Right, right.
Right now, I'm good with the case-by-case situation.
We know what, we know what Councilman Hall's position is.
I'd go either way. I'm okay with the process as it is now.
You have to keep it case-by-case.
Okay. We have pretty much a majority saying as it is right now.
I do applaud your effort, the gentleman to my left.
Intend, not effort, intend. Next item on the agenda is the Animal Ordinance Review Committee. Mr. Pasama, yes, how are you?
Good.
Fine, good to see you today, tonight. I think Ms. Hurley has sort of kept you up to date with what, where the council is heading on this and what we'd like to see done?
Yes, sir. I'm aware that names have been, people have been coming in, asking to be on the committee or they're interested in being on the committee. I was asked to come in and once again, kind of go over some of the items that I think we should add to or amend to the current animal code within Wycomico County. The first item that I would do is amend 133-17, Section B, Subsections 3 and 4. That has to deal with animal shelters. My recommendation would be between November 1st and March 31st, the structure must have a windbreak at the entrance. This is for people that have their dogs outside in the winter, when you have the really strong gust of wind, the cold air, having that windbreak on the structure gives the dog more protection against the elements. Dogs are just like us, their extremities are very suspect of frostbite and other types of cold injuries. This is something that I've seen when I worked in Pittsburgh, we had this on our, in our city laws, and we had no issues with that. Furthermore, the law currently states, when it comes to shelters, in subsection 4, the shelter shall provide protection from weather, i.e. sun, wind, precipitation, or other inclement and unsafe weather, must be clean, in a clean sanitary condition, free from extreme and unreasonable, objectable odor. So this would just be adding to that, that, you know, essentially, they have to have that windbreak on the front of the doghouse or whatever structure they might have to prevent the wind from getting at the dog.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
How do you know where to put the windbreak? Because you don't know which way the wind's going to be blowing on any given day.
Well, what the windbreak does is when the wind blows, usually that heavy piece of rubber will at least help stop the wind. If you're looking at a typical doghouse, you have the one entrance to it.
Are you talking about covering the door with a piece of rubber?
Yeah, that's essentially what the windbreak is.
So you're not talking about putting a panel up on one side of the door or the other?
No, sir, it's on the doghouse specifically. The doghouse must have, or would have a windbreak if this were...
So it's more like a, like a door flap?
Essentially, yes. Kind of, essentially, think of like a doggy door on your back door going outside.
Okay, okay, I understand now. The other, the other part I read in here is about the structure must provide shade from direct rays of sunlight.
Yes.
So how are you going to, how are you going to achieve that?
We already have a lot of people that do that. They take tarps or other type of material, and they put it, like if they have, like those 10 by 10 outdoor kennels that you can get a tractor supply or someplace like that, they'll take tarps and put them over the side and over the top to prevent direct rays, rays of sunlight. That's vital. Dogs, just like us, can come under heat stress, heat stroke very quickly, and in canines, once it onsets, it's very hard to reverse it, so it's just another way to help protect them. But that's essentially, and even if they have an outdoor kennel like that and they have a doghouse within it, that's still, that's going to, you know, it doesn't mean the dog's going to use it, you can't force the dog to use it, but giving the dog the option to have that available.
Why would somebody keep a dog outside in that kind of weather?
You'd be surprised, sir. We have people, dogs are outside 24/7 in this county with some people.
I just can't see having a pet if you're going to keep it outside in that kind of weather and torture it.
But, and like I said, we come across it all the time.
Are there any codes that you come across where they can't stay out in excessive heat or...
In Wycomico County, no.
No, no, I know you're doing research on the internet, but if you come across...
When I was in the city of Pittsburgh, we did.
There was a code for the city?
Yeah, there was a code in the city of Pittsburgh. Let me find it real quick, I can... In our tethering, we had a section for prohibition of keeping dogs outside in extreme weather. Let me find the exact section.
But then you have to define what extreme weather is.
The definition of extreme weather, the dog cannot be tethered outside during any period in which a severe weather warning has been issued for Allegheny County by the National Weather Service, so with us, it'd be either, you could use Department of Emergency Services for Wycomico County or National Weather Service. And then furthermore, the dog is not tethered outside for a continuous period of time greater than a half hour if the temperature during such period remains entirely below 32 degrees Fahrenheit or above 90 degrees Fahrenheit, and that's what I would propose for here.
When you say tethered, you mean on a rope or a chain?
Yes.
And we have some of those laws in place now in Wycomico County. I mean, there are, there are limitations as far as leaving dogs outside in inclement weather.
No, there's not. I haven't seen any that I've been able to find.
I'll have to look at, I, I remember the last time...
I mean, there's, there is a section that says the shelter must provide protection from inclement weather.
Right.
But there's nothing specifically saying, like, you can't keep your dog, there's nothing saying you can't keep your dog tethered outside. When we get really bad rainstorms or, you know, part of a tropical storm rushes by us, some of the lower-lying areas that are susceptible to flooding, we've actually gone out there and seen dogs pretty much treading water.
I know they're doing that. I know that it's happening, but I thought that what we had currently was something to the effect that if it's extremely cold, you know, it's freezing temperatures, there must be some type of cover for the, for the animal. I could be completely wrong, but...
Yeah, the only thing is it says the shelter shall provide protection, but there's nothing I found in our county code stating that the dog cannot be outside during those extreme weather conditions.
Okay.
And what I propose, it would allow people to have their dogs outside so they can obviously go to the bathroom and get outside, but it's going to prohibit people from unnecessarily leaving their animals, you know, if we have a hurricane coming, you know, it's going to prevent people from leaving their animals outside during those...
When you say leaving them outside...
Yes.
Are they outside if there's a doghouse?
To me, they are. I consider that outside.
But I think what I was trying to remember, a total recall from about eight years ago, was that the doghouse is what allowed that animal to be outside because it had protection.
Correct.
Even though, you know, it may be very cold outside.
Yeah, and that's what they're saying, it gives it protection. What I propose actually specifically says to, you know, to, if severe weather warning has been issued for Wycomico County by National Weather Service, no dog may be tethered outside for more than 30 minutes. Having the dog in a kennel, you know, an open kennel in a doghouse, you know, that may be something that can be tied in, but at least the tethering, because with the flooding that we do have in this area, if you have a dog tethered outside, it can only swim for so long before it's just going to collapse of exhaustion. And then the temperature thing, that's a hard sell with some people, because for, you know, if it's below 30 degrees Fahrenheit, and I have a chihuahua, that's obviously not going to be good for it to be outside, but if I have a husky, they're a little more durable for the wintertime. So, you know, that was something in Pittsburgh that we kind of had to play on a case-by-case basis. If someone had their husky outside and it was below 30, we might not give them a citation for it because it is a husky. But on the flip side, in the summer, if it was over 90 out and they had their husky outside, then we would crack down on them because it's a husky.
John?
Yes?
Sorry. Just for a clarification of this process, aren't we discussing who's going to be on this commission, and then these are the recommendations that the commission's going to talk about, and then they'll form something to bring back to the council?
Yes, I was just allowing Mr. Pasama to give us an overview.
I understand, I just...
You're 100% correct.
Okay.
So those are the main things, there's two other things that I would like the commission to work on to bring back to the county council. The one is dog kennels and licensing fees. Currently, the state law and county law says 15 unspayed female dogs over the age of six months or six litters per year, you have to prove both of those for someone to actually get a license for breeding or for a kennel. That is actually going to change. I've recommended bringing us down to five. I've been up in Annapolis testifying on behalf of this bill, Senate Bill 573, House Bill 334, which passed both houses. It has a few more procedural steps, and it's going to go to the governor. So that law that's in our county code right now, once the governor signs it, it's going to be antiquated anyways and brought down to where I wanted. The biggest thing that, well, one of the bigger things, I guess, that I want to see the commission tackle is feral cats, specifically cats that have been trap-neutered, returned. Currently, there's nothing on the books saying that cats are running at large or anything, but I would like the commission to bring to county council to recognize TNR cats, which is trap-neuter, return. Those cats have been spayed or neutered, they've been vaccinated, and they have an ear tip to signal that, that they are considered free-roaming animals. There's other counties, Prince George's County, Intermodal County have similar laws in effect, and that's something I would like to see us gravitate towards those laws.
Okay, good. Any questions?
I think I'll weed, I've got quite a few questions, but I think I'll wait until the committee gets their job done.
Sure, sure. Now, as far as, I mean, council's had the opportunity to review the names on here, I'm assuming that there's a few questions that we have in regard to it, and they're volunteering, they seem to be anxious to take part in this. voluntary, and they seem to be anxious to, to take part in this. Ms. Hurley, what...
There was, there was one additional name added today to the list, so the most current chart is actually the one that was handed out. It's on the council table.
From this point on, what, what's, what will be the process, Ms. Hurley? I believe Mr. Kramer sort of over, oversaw the last committee to a certain degree as far as getting them started and coordinating, like, where they could meet, how they would meet. What would you suggest?
Well, if council is okay with the names on the chart here, I would recommend that we send a letter to everyone, and I will see if I can set up a meeting room and let them know a time and place for the initial meeting.
I, I would suggest making, trying to see what the council's schedules might be in case any of the council members would like to be at that first meeting.
Yes.
And, of course, Mr. Basama is going to be very important in this whole process as well. I would give him a first priority.
Mr. President, I just have a question, a process question here. So, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench in this here, but does the council have authority to set up a board like this?
It's a good question. We've discussed that. We've discussed that with Mrs. Hurley and Mr. Baker, because there has been a lot of talk back and forth as whether it has, needs to be an executive initiative or not.
Yeah, yeah, that, it seems like the charter, citizen advisory boards falls under the executive.
And, and if, we have no problem with any of that process, but Mr. Baker, I would defer to you because I know you've had, we've had discussions on this.
I don't think it's necessary, but if the executive would like to take the initiative and start the committee, then it goes under 508, and he'd recommend the names to you and you approve them.
Okay. I, I have no problem doing that. I, I think that process might not be a bad process, if that's okay with you gentlemen.
Well, first, I've heard that, so...
Right, yeah.
I'm sure you've done a great job of letting people know. Just to reiterate, Mark, we should do it the right way.
And we have, we've, I mean, we've talked about whether or not we need to engage the executive branch or not. Ed felt pretty certain that, and it, it can get very complicated, but Ed kind of felt after, you know, sorting through it all, that, that we'd be okay in this process the way it is, but I don't mind backing up and changing course.
Yeah, I'd feel more comfortable making sure we're in compliance with the charter and the citizens.
All right. We'll get, Ms. Hurley will get you the list, okay? And we can go from there?
I guess if we, if the executive takes over appointing the committee and bringing it to us, are we gonna have legal attend these meetings? So, the folks on the committee, when they make suggestions that they don't bring stuff to us, it's not gonna be legal to even do in the first place, and it'll save, save them a lot of time.
It's a good question. Mr. Baker, the last time we did this, did, did you or did Maureen sit in on this committee, these committee meetings?
She sat in on a few of them, but lost control. And, I mean, I mean, that, that would be my only concern. I mean, there needs to be some input, some oversight, because you're asking a bunch of, a group of citizens who have a great deal of interest in the topic to come up with legislation, and that's what we have on the books now, and we've got tremendous amount and number of problems with it. Frankly, it might be more productive, and I guess now that the executive would be heading it up, one of the things he could consider is there's a number of counties, and it seems to have a couple, a couple of them, that have got very good, workable ordinances, is to take that and present it to the committee and let them provide additional information on how they feel about certain things. I mean, one of the things that I've heard, and I haven't read everything, is that somebody wants to expand the list of animals that fall within the animal control ordinance. That's, and I think they forget, they don't realize that the county has to pay for this. And I remember when we had situations where the, I think it was alpacas, the animal control or the Humane Society took them away for mistreatment, and they wanted the county to pay for it. And the feral cats are a big issue, especially with the health department, but if you start applying this, regulating cats, you're hurting cats, and it can be very expensive. So, I think there needs to be some input, what type of parameters you're looking at. I think ferrets got in there by mistake at one point in time. I don't know how we ever got to regulating ferrets, but there are a lot of those nuances that the community who are interested in dogs and cats don't realize the problems that are down the road.
Mr. Young, get a comment? Use the mic, because they, they can't hear you, Pac-14.
Good evening. The existing animal appeal board has legal staff support with Roscoe Leslie, so he's, he's very familiar with the, with at least dealing with biting cases and, and the determining of dangerous or potentially dangerous dogs, so that may be helpful.
And that was one of the concerns we had at the very beginning, was that the health department should not be on the board and making the determination of dangerous dogs. And I think lawyers already asked to have that looked at and possibly be removed.
To be removed, you're saying?
I, I think she wants to be removed from deeming dangerous, the dogs.
My concern with the, go ahead, Mike, yeah. My concern, the last time we put this together, of course, law department was salaried. The law department is no longer salaried. It's gonna make a bit of a difference.
I think from a process standpoint, that we've got a lot of confidence in, in Aaron. He's ultimately responsible, and perhaps the committee could vet their recommendations through Aaron. He could then bring those forward to us in work sessions so that we could then, as a body, determine what we think ought to be included in legislation. I, I think that'll be a much, much more productive and streamlined process. And, and ultimately, Aaron, you know, Aaron, Aaron has to enforce this, and he's gotta find funding for it, so I, I would really encourage you to have it vetted through him before we begin to talk about legislation.
So, you're saying at that point is where kind of the legal would come in, saying...
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Aaron's kind of, you, you have more of the practical and legal knowledge, and then an attorney could do it, yeah.
Yeah, and I know there's, it's inevitable, there's inevitable, there's probably gonna be some people that will end up on the board that, you know, I might have to rein them in as to the fact that, you know, animal control doesn't have the capability to do X, Y, Z, or X, Y, Z just isn't feasible, and that's where I hope to kind of be able to be that soundboard to the rest of the committee is that, you know, what animal control actually can and cannot accomplish.
I, I assume this is an advisory committee, and until it's presented to the council or to the administration, there's no legal binding to it, and the best time to vet it is not as the process is going on, but after the process established which direction they're headed and rules and regulations, the best time to do it would be after it's presented to this body, I would think.
I think, I think Wayne's... Mr. Cannon, I suggest we turn this list of names over to the executive's office and let Mr. Culver decide whether he wants these folks to dis serve or not, and if he has names he wants to add or delete or whatever, and move on from there.
Sounds good. Are you, are you the de facto chairperson?
What's that?
Are you the de facto chairman?
Um, I, I don't know.
Sounds like you may be.
If it ends up that way, so be it.
Okay. All right. I agree, Councilman Halli, that's good, and well to do that. Bob, we'll wait to hear back from, from you guys, okay? And at the same time, once that process begins, and then we can begin to contact the individual members, and Ms. Hurley will set everything up.
Sure.
And as the, I think Mr. Charles made a very good point. The committee as a whole probably would need to be working with you to sort of fine-tune this, and it has to be done before it comes back to the council, because the reason we had a committee the last time, and Mr. Baker and Joe, you'll remember, we sat in this, these chambers for about two hours before we realized that we were getting nowhere, and it can be, it can get convoluted very quickly.
I believe it.
So, we look forward to having you spearheading this, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
If you do have the time to do that.
Yes, sir.
Great, okay. Well, anything else you wanted to add for tonight?
No, sir.
And we appreciate you taking the effort and, and stepping forward.
Absolutely, anytime. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Where are we, John? Wayne, did you have any comments? No?
No.
You're good, okay, great, okay. All right, yeah.
Mr. President, I, I would like to thank everybody that has expressed an interest to serve on this important committee, because there were a lot of names submitted.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman Dodd. Entertaining motion, if we could, to adjourn the open work session to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion's carried. Work session.